I'm going to call to order the Norco City Council regular meeting for Wednesday, June 19th, 6:05. If the clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash? Councilmember, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem Hanna? Mayor Grunmeier?
Yes. Thank you all are present. Thank you. At this time, the City Council will recess to closed session to consider the items on the agenda. I'm going to call the City Council meeting back to order and reconvene the public session. I apologize for the delay. At this time, we will have our city attorney report on actions taken in closed session.
On item one, the council gave settlement authority, and on item two, there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. So we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Bash and then remain standing for invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's my pleasure to call up Paul Christensen from Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to gather together as citizens of this community and leaders of our community and express our gratitude for all of thy blessings upon our community. We are grateful for the men and women who serve us as employees and are grateful for their efforts. Grateful for the many men and women who volunteer their services to our community and contribute their time and talent and resources and express our appreciation for their efforts. We pray thy blessings to be upon our community and all of the efforts that are taking place within our community, that our businesses may prosper, that our citizens may have goodwill towards one another, and especially that our youth may find themselves located in a place which will foster good feelings of respect and kindness for one another. We love thee and are appreciative of this great country in which we live, and for those men and women who have sacrificed for us, we offer this prayer to thee with gratitude for thee and for thy son, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up Scott DeRosa for our Business Appreciation Honorary.
And I'd like to go ahead and call up Joe Centino. Is Joe here?
No, neither.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Norco Economic Development Advisory Council, known as EDAC. And on behalf of the City Council and EDAC, I am pleased to assist Mayor Grunmeier with presenting this month's Business Appreciation Award to Ace Hardware. I don't believe that there's anything more traditional than a family-owned neighborhood hardware store in a small rural town. I believe most everyone in Norco is familiar with our local Ace Hardware store and the personalized service they provide. Norconians Michael and Nicolina brand opened their Ace Hardware franchise in 1977, and it's become a staple in our small town. Now owned by their daughter Nancy Shepherd and managed by Joe Centino, who's been working there since its beginning, our local Ace Hardware continues to be that small mom-and-pop shop to go to when you need hardware for your home or your ranch. They also support many charities and community events, as well as employing our local residents. So congratulations Ace Hardware for being the recipient of Norco's June 2019 Business Appreciation Award. And now I'll turn the mic over to Mayor Grunmeier.
So we have a plaque for them that reads, "The City of Norco hereby honors Ace Hardware for its local ownership's commitment to personalized service consistent with the hometown values of Horsedown USA," so we will make sure that they get this. So we're going to go ahead and proceed to our regular business agenda with item number one, which is City Council Communications Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. So we will start with Mayor Protem Hanna.
Thank you, Mayor. If you notice there, July the 1st, the RTA rates are going to go up, I think they're going to go up about 10 to 15 cents. They haven't raised them in 10 years, so that's all I've got to report on that one. There we have one from Vector. That's a new virus that's infecting people in China, and they believe that little tick there is the culprit. And you're asking why bring something in from China? Well, if you shop at Walmart, your clothes come from China, so that little booger could come in on a shipment of clothes and be over here in the United States before you know it, just like the malaria mosquito that's fixing to hit us big time, that they're really fighting hard on now in this country. And on another note with RCTC, if you read the paper today, you noticed that we now have total funding for three future products, or projects coming into the area. One of them is an extra lane on the 91 freeway going from Green River to the 241 toll lane tied there. They figure that lane will help move traffic right on when they get off of Green River onto the 91, they can stay in that lane and get right on to the 241 up there. And one thing we did at our little subcommittee meeting last week with Orange County is the Transportation Commission was wanting to build a flyover from the 241 toll lanes into the eastbound 91 toll lanes, which is fine, it'll stop that jam up down there on the 241 in the afternoon. But we voted against it, and Orange County sided with us on it, and they went back later at their regular board meeting and voted against it again because we want them to wait till 2022, when all the construction's done up here on this end, on the 15, till we figured if they had construction going on both ends, nobody would move at all. So at least by them delaying it for a while, it'll kind of keep traffic moving a little bit, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask Councilman Hanna real quick, next time you're at vector control, could you ask them about the typhus and the fleas or rodents if they're checking into it when you get a chance?
Yeah, somebody mentioned a little bit about, something about that today, but I'll find out tomorrow because it'll be at that deal we're going to.
Okay, I know you had a meeting in Mar- yeah, that's right.
It's bad in LA County, you know, it's going to move out here.
Correct. Well, this is, what you're looking at on the screen was the Western Community Energy Meeting, and I know it's hard to read up there, but I'll go down to the bottom. The WCE through WRCOG did a survey for the voter and ratepayer survey, and I'll kind of look through there. They had a total of 318 voters that were surveyed in English, Spanish, and Chinese regarding what WC is, and the WCE is our energy program, what we're trying to get started here in Western Riverside County. Our start date has been pushed back to April of 2020, basically because of Southern California Edison recomputering and redoing their system, their IT people, and it might be as far as June of 2020, depending on when Southern California Edison gets that project accomplished. That comes back to where leadership doesn't talk to IT people, and the IT people won. But overall, in the survey, and hopefully if one of you got a phone call from them, or they surveyed Norconians, and I'll read over here the survey, so you don't have to read the small print. 58, overall 58.5% said they support participating in the Western Community Energy. You could say, we're going to project saving you 2% on your electric bill right now. Overall, 68.6% agree they're in favor of saving any amount on their Edison bill. Over 64.8% agreed to support alternative energy options to Southern California Edison. And then overall, 61% prefer energy rates set by local elected officials at public meetings rather than having somebody up in the Bay Area decide, on the CPUC, decide what your rates are for you. Interesting to note, Norconians, you never surprise me, you're all Missourians, it's a show-me type of state. Norco was very skeptical of the whole WCE program and the survey, which is good. I mean, you challenge what everybody else, the young millennials from Eastvale and what they wanted, the folks in Aruba Valley, the Hammett, even the older people in Hammett, but you guys are very skeptical in the situation and wanted to know more, and wanted to say, okay, show me the savings, the reality of it. So that's good. I'm glad you guys are questioning that. So we'll continue to bring you updates on this thing, but I said, our pushback was, for start, is going to be at least until mid-year 2020. And the other one, Matt, if you can, keep going. Flag Day. I want to thank everyone that came out on July 14th and helped us commemorate Flag Day at the memorial. Especially want to thank the Inland Christian Choir for all the music that they sung, and along with the Parker Rec staff and the Veterans Committee for helping us put that thing together. The people that came out, it was a beautiful ceremony. If you get to see, I believe the Facebook page is Life in Norco, check Gary Evans's videos on what he did, he posted three of them, very excellent job he did up there. So Brian, you and your staff did an excellent job, and I appreciate it. Thank you. And that's all, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Bash?
So I went through a bunch of stuff, and most importantly, a couple of things. June 14th, I went up to Sacramento and attended the League of Cities Community Services Committee Meeting. It's, it was very interesting that I kind of felt it was a little bit schizophrenic because the staff is very excited about the budget of the governor, very excited, and it's going to help homelessness and housing and all very, very important issues, PERS, pensions, but the people that were there were upset, and they were upset that, at a lot of the budget items, it's projected that our surplus will be gone and will actually be broke in three years. There's a lot of, if you're from Southern California, there's a real north-south kind of battle going on. There's just a lot, people are not happy with the super-duper majority, and so you kind of, when you're sitting around having coffee between your sessions, you're hearing these things. One of the things that's being formed, and we were kind of out of the loop, Ted and I sit on that committee, is we're forming the Rural Communication Exchange, which is going to be called Rural X, and it's rural communities. We're one of the founding members, but the League of Cities doesn't want to give us status as an organization. They'll allow us to have meetings, they'll allow us to utilize a certain amount of staff time, but it's basically to kind of call out the governor and say, hey, you said you were going to support rural cities. We have a unique set of problems. And it was relayed to me today that they're very nervous about giving that kind of power to a group because they don't want us to align with like the rural counties of California. The Coastal Commission, actually, there was a coastal group like ours that has aligned with the Coastal Commission, which makes them more powerful than the League of Cities. That's why a lot of the laws that were passed, you saw reps carving out, well, it's not going to apply to my area, it's not going to apply here, it's not going to apply out, they were carve-outs. So there was quite a bit of that going on. But all in all, it was a really illuminating meeting, and I believe I sent you, I'm not sure if I did, actually, I will send you the paperwork on some of the different things that are coming up. There is one SB 50, we knocked it down, there was a lot of relief about that. SB 50 was the one that would kind of take over your neighborhood, but there's another one, and they're trying to push that through. I mean, just imagine, they can buy a house next door to you, put in 300 apartments, and they're not required to have parking. Where are they going to park in Norco? One side of the street's a horse trail. So we're in the process of fighting that, and it's interesting. And then just on another note, the high transmission lines, we somehow, through a staff error, we didn't become party status in that. And I'm telling you right now, every councilperson has been involved in that for years. And so we sort of thought we fixed it, and basically, we have kind of a stake in the game because, as you recall, a quarter of Norco was actually evacuated when there was a fire down in the river. So we would like the commissioners to hear that, we would like the judge to hear that and say, hey, these high transmission lines just burned down half of Northern California, and we'd kind of like to not have that happen in Norco again. It wasn't transmission lines, but we are next to the river. And so the City of Riverside and Edison are trying to block that effort so that we can't be a party and may not be able to present our case up in Sacramento when they make that final hearing. The big issue is, is that the environmental impact study doesn't have any of the fire concerns. Sadly, we got support from the local fire department to help us, but by the time it worked its way up to the lawyers, they basically wouldn't release the letter that basically said, yeah, there's kind of a fire danger down there, although they have noted that that is a fire, high propensity fire area. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. And then I did attend today, just one last thing, I attended the Norco Chamber Commerce Legislative Update Meeting, and representatives from Sabrina Cervantes, yes, they're back in our, they're back, and Senator Roth and Karen Spiegel, our supervisor, and it was actually a very, very, I only beat up on them a little, but it was actually a very, very good session, and I kind of got to talk about how things are going in Norco, and I think that's, and then one other thing, I'm kind of sad, on a personal note, they let Brian Reese go over at Norco College. I think it was a gigantic mistake, and what makes me angriest is, we have a district, and our district representative is Bill Hedrick. Bill Hedrick is the college district for everybody who lives in Norco, Eastvale, Corona, and part of Aruba Valley. They fired our college president, huge support for this guy, won't get into why or how, all that stuff, but our trustee, our one voice, was not there when they did that. And I hope he has, and I like Bill, and I respect him a lot, but why he wasn't there, I just don't understand it. And you know what? Feel free to call the guy out. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So June 6th, we had our monthly Chino Basin Disalter Authority, and I thought I'd just run down a little bit on the numbers we have been working on, and we adopted our capital and operations maintenance budget for 19 and 2020. Revenues, $44 million, 239 against expenses of $45 million, 334, so we will be decreasing our reserve balance by a little over $1 million. And the bottom line on that is going to work out. It's kind of a wide range, but the cost of water is estimated to be between $723,000 and $976 this next year per acre foot. I can't explain why we have such a wide range of cost. We're obligated to buy 1,000 square feet, so we, out of the approximately 35,000 acre feet that's produced by the authority. We also had a discussion, which I'm going to be talking about later tonight under other matters, is regarding consultants and suppliers, and it's a project management term called scope-of-work creep. And it's what happens when your consultants and your vendors, their costs start creeping out of control, little by little, and it's a very interesting, unique study. That's all I have right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I don't have anything to report, so we will move on to item number two, which is our-
Madam Mayor, may I just say something very quickly?
Yes.
She was also, I just want people to know, she was also at that meeting for the president of Norco College, and she spoke so eloquently and so professionally, and I just really want to give kudos to the mayor for the comments that she made, really.
Thank you. We'll move on to City Council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and can be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three on our agenda. So with that, I will ask the council if there are any to pull. 2C for Bash?
And Newton?
And Newton. And Hoffman. It's a threefer. Any other items to be pulled?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number 2G.
Any others? Okay, so we'll entertain a motion.
What should approve the rest?
They're second.
Second. And Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Will the clerk show that I abstain from item H?
Okay.
And for the clerk's reference, I will abstain from 2D.
That acceptable? Okay. With those two abstentions noted, I think we're ready to vote. Okay, thank you. So we will move on to item three, and we will start with item C. So I'll go in alphabetical order. Councilman Bash, you're up first.
I just had a question. On 4A, Steve, I noticed it was a 3-2 vote, request for approval of an accessory building use permit to allow 900 square foot large vehicle parking building at 2275 Gulfstream Lane, and that apparently somebody thought it should be torn down before it was rebuilt. Is it totally within code at this time?
It is not. The building has to be torn down and moved to the approved location.
Okay.
And rebuilt.
What were the noes? What were the?
Just the sequence of events. They felt that the building should have been gone first before they came forward to reapply.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, that was my question too on that. Did this building come to us as a council on an appeal a year and a half ago?
Yes.
And at that time, the council's decision was the building had to be moved because it was built without a permit?
It had to be removed.
Removed, okay, all right. And then my other question on the B, on 3B on that one, correct me if I'm wrong because we only have the short minutes here, is there is no, the monument area for that was removed then for the entranceway on that, or?
No, that was added.
That was added?
Yes.
A monument for that. Okay, I'll let Councilman Newton have his say on that one.
Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Steve, I'm going to close the deal here.
Okay.
All right. So item 3B variance?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that this should come to council, I guess as an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. I agree with the addition, additional condition of adding a monument. This is a gateway entrance to the city, so not a problem with that. I have a problem with the variance being granted for a reduction in landscape requirements. And am I reading that correctly? That variance was granted to allow the applicant to reduce the landscaping?
Yeah, what the Planning Commission did is they approved a reduction of a landscape planner from a required 10 feet to 5 feet, but the overall percentage of landscaping, the project does meet that requirement. So there's a landscape planner next to Second Street that was, is required to be 10 feet. They couldn't accommodate the 10 feet and still maintain the circulation around the, around the site with the 25 foot that's needed for two-way traffic. And so what they did is they requested a variance to reduce that landscape planner from 10 feet to 5 feet, but they still do meet the 15% requirement that the CG zone requires.
Why would a variance be required then at all if they met the overall required percentage of landscaping?
Because that landscape strip was supposed to be 10 feet, and they could only fit 5 feet. And in exchange, the three Planning Commission members that voted to approve it felt that the addition of some monumental art or fountain at the corner would suffice for that approved variance.
Okay, I don't have an issue with the monument sign. Like I said, I'd like to see this come back. I'd like a report to council on the landscaping. I'm just not comfortable with the variance and the explanation that you're giving, okay?
So just the variance, not the CG?
Yeah, bring the whole thing, Steve.
If you're making a motion, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been-
I still got to go to four. You want to do them separately?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, sure.
That'd be easiest for the clerk, probably. So it's been moved and seconded to appeal item 3B of the June 12th Planning Commission meeting. Vote has been passed, it's unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Newton?
So Steve, on item 4A, this site plan on this accessory building, approximately two years ago, this building was constructed without permits, went to Planning Commission. Planning Commission decision was for the building to be removed. It was appealed to council.
Correct.
Council concurred with the Planning Commission.
Correct.
That the building should be removed, and this became a code enforcement action.
Correct.
So for the last two years, this has been an unresolved code case.
Correct.
Comes to the Planning Commission, and when I read that on the agenda, it was, well, if you guys approve the re- And when I read that on the agenda, it was, well, if you guys approve the reload, you know, the relocation, I'll move it. And it kind of left it open as, that's kind of how it read on the agenda to me, but it's a, if you don't approve it, I don't know if I'm going to move it or not.
Well, what came to the planning commission was a, and I might be talking about something different, so if I am, I apologize, but there was a statement from the city attorney that said that if the planning commission chooses to approve this, that's a resolution of a legal action that's already been started against the property owner and that legal action would then stop if it got approved by the planning commission.
Was that you, Colin?
Yes. It was, and there was also a provision that was made clear to the applicant during the hearing that the applicant, we'd also be requesting our attorney fees for bringing the code action.
I guess what troubles me is it took, you know, nothing happened for two years, but the direction of city council was remove the building and that direction was ignored for two years.
Well, that's not true. Not true.
Well, ignored as-
It had been ignored by the homeowner.
Right.
Staff did not ignore it.
No, and I'm not inferring that you ignored it.
All right.
That, it was ignored by the property owner for two years until this application was made.
And I do not want to say that the property owner ignored it because in that time, they were working with staff to try and resolve the issue. But there was a series of events that occurred. A letter was sent by me to the property owner, giving them a deadline to remove it. Didn't get removed. They got cited once, didn't get removed, got cited twice, didn't get removed. Then it was given to the city attorney to take legal action. Demand letter was sent to them that had to be removed and ultimately, they had to start court proceedings and then we got what we have here.
So if this moves forward, Colin, you can weigh in, are we going to be reimbursed all our attorney's fees along with double permit fees and everything else that goes along with it?
Yes.
I think I'd like this one to come back for further discussion also, only because of our original direction that remove it first. I'm still a little troubled with why we take an application when something hasn't been corrected first. You know, we should clear the board before we go to the next step.
I'll second that. I'll second that motion because it seems like somehow or another, we're playing Monty Hall here with this situation.
Yeah, let's make a deal.
We wanted to make it, let's make a deal. And that wasn't the direction that this council gave at that time. So I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to-
Under discussion.
Yes.
I asked because it was a three-two vote. That's what was confusing. I don't know about bringing it back. I'll support if you guys want to, but the reality is, is that at this point, it goes to court, correct?
Now, if the planning commission action is upheld, what has to happen is the property owner has to tear it down and move it and rebuild it at the approved new location. And we would, and the city attorney would seek fees to cover the court costs and then they would pay double fees for their building permits. That's the way it stands right now.
So what would our action, just as a question, what would it mean to bring it back to us? I mean, what would be the purpose?
Well, to me, it's, we told them to take it down. I mean, they have to start all over again, essentially. They have gone on for almost two years and not done that. I don't want to be punitive, but at the same time, this thing should have been, you tell me in the planning, again, we only work with these short notes, you tell me they've already approved it, so it was moved and there is no violation with the PACA there that's in that property like it was before?
It has not been moved yet.
Nothing's happened.
Nothing's happened. It's still in the wrong location. The way it was approved, it has to be torn down and moved and rebuilt at the approved new location, but the way it stands right now is not in the right location where it was illegally built to begin with.
Correct. Is there a time limit on this thing for them to do it? Or a performance contract with it?
The building permit is typically given six months when it's issued.
I'll defer to Councilman Newton who says the original motion, but I still think we're playing Monty Hall.
I'm not comfortable with it. I'd like to see that come before us. Just something doesn't sit right with me, Steve, on this.
Madam Mayor, if I could comment on the, what's going to happen at this point, assuming if the council wants to take it back, that's completely the council's prerogative to hear it. If the council didn't decide to hear it, what would happen is we would take the planning commission's conditions and we would put that into a judgment. And the judge would sign off on the judgment and we would demand that they reimburse the city for all the attorney fees. They're going to get a hefty penalty for dragging this out just in paying the attorney fees. Because it's a judgment, if they don't actually follow through with what the planning commission said, we can have the judge enforce it immediately without having to go back through the court process. It's basically going to be a court order. So if they violate it, they're not just violating the planning commission, but they're in contempt of court. So we have options to really bring the hammer down once it becomes a judgment, if the council's comfortable with that. If you're not, it's completely your discretion to bring it up here and discuss it at council level.
I think I'd still like to discuss it, but taking in regard what the attorney's saying. But at the same time, looking at the new proposed drawings, I wouldn't want to hit them again for fees because I, you know, looking at it, that it's a permitted building in the proper location, I don't see where, you know, and judged by this action, planning wouldn't have an issue in approving it. So I don't want them to like resubmit again, but I think the first step is have that building down. But I need some more information, Steve.
Now or on appeal?
On appeal.
So Colin, let me understand this so I'm clear. If it comes back to appeal to council, you're saying we're going to lose our ability to do what the planning commission did and continue with the court action then? Or we have the-
That's correct.
So then we'll be short if we won't have to get, we won't be able to get the court costs and the attorney fees from these people, correct?
Well, we would be able to if we continue the case and ultimately prevail. This is essentially, the planning commission hearing was something close to a settlement discussion and there was a tentative deal. That deal is obviously subject to the council. It's approvable. We would just have to continue the court case. The bottom line is that they were in violation, they got notices to correct, they failed to correct, they presented something to the planning commission that the council doesn't like. The council's not obligated to accept something. We would just, if the council decided to withdraw the variance or reverse the variance, then we'd simply continue down the court process.
Did the resident agree to this that night?
Yes.
So, well, for me, that makes it different. The resident agreed, I mean, I guess, I do feel like we need to give them a shot at keeping their word, so.
And we are working through the final details of the settlement agreement with the resident's attorney, so I don't have a complete document to tell the council, this is it, but I can represent to the council that unless we come back and get your permission, we're not going to put anything in front of the judge unless they pay 100% of the fees to reimburse the city. And also, we put it as part of a judgment that they comply with each and every one of the planning commission's conditions.
Colin? And Steve, we haven't issued any permits yet, have we?
No.
Okay. Have they made application?
Not for building permits, no, because they have to wait for approval first and then submit for building permits.
I trust you, okay? No permits issued until paid in full. Would that be reasonable? Attorney's fees and the double permit fees?
I think it's reasonable, yes. It would be cleaner if we kept the two tracks separate so that the planning department could proceed with their planning approval process as a separate action and we take that approval process and put it into the judgment. Once it's in the judgment, we can enforce the attorney fee provision through contempt or we can file it on the property.
But he would have a building permit at the time.
You know, we'll make that part of the, we'll make that part of the judgment demand, that you pay the attorney fees before-
And all permit fees and attorney's fees paid before we issue any permits.
He has received, he has received the variance, so that has occurred unless the council reverses that. So at this point, he has that, he has that right.
This is not a variance.
I'm sorry, thank you, the-
Just a side point.
He has received a certain right from the commission that unless the council hears it and reverses it, he has. Building permits, I'd have to talk to Steve more about the, what the prerequisites are for getting a building permit. There might be some ministerial issues there that we don't have discretion to deny it on and there may be some discretionary portions, but I'm just not, I haven't discussed it enough with Steve to find out if we could say at this point, we're not going to give you a building permit. It might be required by the code. I can tell you that any order and settlement of the case is going to have an attorney fee requirement in it that they pay. And we can even make them pay before we dismiss the case and submit the settlement.
I just feel this is going to drag on and part of my hesitation on this is that in the past, we've had cases that are open code cases with fines and penalties due and we issue another permit to that homeowner for another project. So we're hung out and it's, that's why I'm kind of dragging on this one.
As I explain this-
And I think that's a stupid road to go down that way.
As I explain this, I can feel the same thing that you're feeling.
Okay.
I understand where you're coming from. I think that your concerns are valid.
But as a practical matter though-
That's shocking.
It would not be issued building permits without first paying the fees. That is our process.
Right.
So that part should be taken care of.
But the attorney's fees-
The attorney's fees is what will be left to us.
Tied with that. How do I get there? You're a smart guy.
Well, we can demand the check before we submit the dismissal so that they're at least still in court in a live case, but frankly, if they agree to a judgment and we put the judgment in, it's filed as a judgment, they can be dismissed or not. If they don't pay the fees, we can bring them back on a contempt hearing.
Let me think, Ted.
Well, I don't want to be hung out with nothing because of all the time that the attorneys and code enforcement has done in this case, we have to recoup some of those costs, even though the applicant has burdened us with those costs. So I'd rather have something at this point and if we come back here, that's where I'm afraid we're going to end up starting back over square one and that's the sad part. And I'm glad you clarified that for me because I was to the point where tear the dang thing down like we told you two years ago and get right with us. But if you're going to make it right with us and we're going to recoup some of those fees, then I'm okay with that. But I hope that it's strongly worded in the agreement and that his people don't issue permits unless those fees come through as part of this. And that's where the people at the counter have to know that.
Now, I need to, we need to be clear here. Once they pay their building permit, application fees and they've submitted their plans and been approved, we have no way to stop that process from going forward. Like Colin said, the recovery of the legal costs is a separate path.
It is, that's correct. So if we, if we don't hear the planning commission's action on appeal and they get their permit, they could theoretically snub their nose and say, I'm not going to pay your fees and we'd have to take them all the way to a trial to get our fees. But I am, I can tell the council, there's going to be no settlement unless they agree to the fees and if they don't, we'll just take them to trial for the fees.
We're back to that, let's make a deal then.
Yeah, let's back to Monty Hall again.
And we're going to settle on fees and all of that. So-
It's frustrating because I'm going to, I'm going to trust you, Colin, that you and the staff there do, do your job on this one because it's very frustrating. So I'm-
And I still have a hard time accepting why you, they can make their application for the building permit, but you're not obligated to, I don't understand that obligation that you'd have to give them a building permit even though they owe us money.
Well, the attorney fees are a separate issue from the building permit. Courts deal with attorney fees, except for a special type of administrative nuisance abatement, which we're not in.
Right.
So the court basically has jurisdiction over the fees. The city has jurisdiction over the permits and granting the permits and the building permits. So they really are on separate tracks, even though one impacts the other. In other words, the permits impact the actual settlement in court. They really are two separate issues. Court is just, is there a nuisance? Do we need the judge to issue an injunction demanding they clean up the nuisance and do we get our attorney fees? That's what is at issue with court. At issue with the city is, are they zoned correctly? Do they have the correct permits? Have they paid their permitting fees? We are settling the case by taking care of both at the same time. They are going to get the proper permits, they're going to get the proper approvals, they're going to pay attorney fees and we're going to get rid of the nuisance case all in one big bundle, which is a settlement agreement, which is going to be entered as a judgment that's going to be enforceable by the judge. Unfortunately, they, we have to have some, it could turn out to be a situation where they basically go back and say, you know what? I know we didn't say this during the planning commission hearing, but we're not going to pay your attorney fees, take us to trial and thanks for the permit. And that would be an extremely frustrating situation where I'd have a bunch of egg on my face. And I don't put it past, I'm not saying that that thought hasn't occurred to me. I think I can get the council to where the council needs to go. I think I can get us a good resolution on this, but there has to, there is some actions that the other side could take that makes things a little bit more difficult, but at the end, it might be a little more difficult. I think I can still get us where we need to be.
Because basically, they're innocent. Until they agree and go to court and it's adjudicated, they're innocent. So right now, per what planning commission came up with, they have agreed, right, to exactly what Colin just laid out. Otherwise, they're innocent. They're not guilty of anything. I mean, they go before a judge and we've all seen it before and the judge says, oh gee, I feel sorry for you. And, you know, Norco has stupid codes, so, you know, that's where we're at. So I think personally, I think we let Colin do his tap dance and let's make a deal and hopefully they pick window three.
And if they-
But I'll go with you if you want to bring it back.
Colin, you're a smart guy. I've known you for a long time. And I trust your opinion. How much are our attorney's fees at a road?
Thirty-four hundred.
I can get that out of you. All right.
Are you going to withdraw your-
Yeah.
-motion?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have another motion? They're second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item, I guess, two C, part two. All right, thank you. We'll move to item two G.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a resolution requesting your approval for management employees' salary, annual salary and benefits for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Their current salary resolution and benefits resolution has, will expire on June 30th. The employees that are covered on that is resolution are management employees, which are essentially department heads. And that is, they are considered as executives and that's the reason I pulled this out of consent calendar so that I can make a small presentation regarding the salary resolution. Essentially, the, what you're being asked to approve this evening for fiscal year 2019, 2020 is the same benefits that are currently in existence for all of those employees. The only item being requested here is to adjust their salary range by 3%, which is the consumer price index for the last 12 months. In addition to that, the position of the finance director is recommended to be currently finance officer. We are recommending that that position be- finance officer, we are recommending that that position be changed to the director of finance, instead of finance officer. That's just, that is just a title change. With respect to the public works director position, we are recommending that their salary range be adjusted from 132,741 to 150,485 dollars, to properly reflect the, the mark, the market salary for that position, especially given what other cities are paying for that particular position. With that, again, the costs related to this adjustment have been included in the budget that will be approved later on in this, in this meeting. And with that, I can take any questions from any members of the City Council.
Do any members of the council have questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. They're second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 2G.
Please vote. This way. Motion approved unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, if you guys will allow me the little leeway, we're going to go ahead and go out of order and call Mr. De Rosa back up for our presentation. Our guest from Ace Hardware is here, so if you wouldn't mind coming up again.
Hi, Joe. Run over here. Well, I hope you get to enjoy the read this again. So I'm going to skip the good evening part, but we're here to go ahead and present Ace Hardware with the Business Appreciation Award for, uh, June 2019. And what I said earlier was that I don't believe that there's anything more traditional than a family-owned neighborhood hardware store in a small rural town. I believe most everyone in the Norco, in Norco is familiar with the local Ace Hardware Store and the personalized service they provide. Norconians Michael and Nicolina Brand opened their Ace Hardware franchise in 1977, and it has become a staple in our small town. Now owned by their daughter Nancy Shepherd and managed by Joe Centeno, who's been working there since the beginning, our local Ace Hardware continues to be that small mom-and-pop shop to go to when you need hardware for your home or ranch. They also support many charities and community events, as well as employing local residents. So congratulations to Ace Hardware for being the recipient of Norco's 2019 Business Appreciation Award. Mayor Grant Meyer.
So it's my pleasure to present to you this plaque that reads that the City of Norco honors Ace Hardware for its local ownership's commitment to personalized service consistent with hometown values of Horstown, USA.
Thank you. I do receive this in, in, um, the name of Michael and, and Nicky Brandy. They were the owners. They did open up, as, as mentioned, in August of 1977. I came to work for them the day after Christmas, that same year. Of course, I was five years old when I started. No, sorry, I just graduated high school, but I've been there forever, just haven't been able to find my way away. My family's been there since '62, so we've been Norconians for a long, long time. It was a blend of a business. I mean, I also have to give credit to Mr. Van de Mullen, because he was our competitor for many years. But then what he did is, he decided he wanted out of that business, and we had two businesses that merged. So we went from having branches being helped and homeowners being helped to being able to combine for both. And we just thank you so much for accepting us into this family and this community. And it is that little hometown thinking that we try to keep, instead of allowing corporate ACE to tell us, "Hey, carry this, carry that." We tailor our merchandise and all that, our stock we have for what our market is here. And I'm always willing that if you guys have a need, and I have the ability to get it for you, I'll stock it. And that's always been the philosophy that we've had over at Norco. So thank you very much for this, and we, you know, we see this as really as an honor, and we thank you so much for this privilege to serve your community and being family. Thank you. I was here at seven.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're going to go to agenda item number four, which is public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you can be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agenda, agendized matters. At the time such comments are made, the City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any of the public comment.
We have one speaker card, Gary Yellis.
Good evening. I got three minutes, so I'll go to my biggest complaint. The light on Sixth Street and Pedley, come on now, that's been blinking like that for three, four weeks. You got two minutes one way, you got one minute the other way. All your diesel trucks, they pull up there to turn carrying cattle, they just turn on the red light. You guys, you can make a lot of money. Come park in my driveway. I ask you, please, come park in my driveway at 4:30 in the morning. You'll get these guys 70, 80 miles an hour going down Pedley. You don't even have to ask me, just park there. I went to the people up front here and also the, uh, Animal, uh, the pound. I, I had some things I needed to work out, and they bent over backwards to help me. Those people need maybe a few more cents on their paycheck. They, they went out of their way, and I'm just a nobody, that's the first time I ever walked in there. So you got good people working for you. Oh, uh, on Pedley, they, uh, just repaved it, and there's some new plastic fences at the far end, the north end. We want to know if you're going to do that all the way along, because my lovely wife bought two loads of rocks, so I moved them out there. Now I already moved them back, figuring you're going to come through and tear everything up. A guy would like to know at my age, are, are you going to do it or not? I've asked many people, nobody, "Oh, I don't know, I'll ask somebody." Come on, somebody's got to have an opinion of what's going on here. I mean, and you guys, this young man here and you guys, get a pot of coffee, homemade cookies, call that guy with that building, you sit down, you talk, you get it over with. Yeah, what I'm hearing here is just attorney stuff. Well, we'll delay it, well, we'll delay it, well, it costs more. Come on, get together, you sit down, that's what I do when I buy something. Isn't that what you do when you buy a horse? You sit down, you figure it out, it's overdone with. You don't stretch it out. And, oh yeah, tell your school bus drivers in Halandia Dairy to slow down down Pedley. They come on there and they just, it's a drag strip going down there. I've tried to say that many times, and nobody's ever listened to me. Oh, and there's a house on Detroit. There's like 10 or 12 cars parked there. I think one moves. It's way off to the back, there's weeds all over. Don't, aren't we proud of Norco? Wouldn't that be a good thing to go over there and just ask the people, "Hey, can you spruce this place up a bit?" Everybody across the street, they're beautiful homes, they're smaller and everything, they take care of it. You know, a little comment might help from you guys. Oh yeah, put some speed bumps out here, so these people from the Navy, when you're coming out from Stater Brothers to turn, and they're getting off work, they just buzz right through. That's another place you guys can make some money there, too. God, you sit there for five, 10 minutes, they don't stop, they just slow up, go through the stop sign. You know, I drive 25, 27 miles an hour around here, but a lot of people don't, so... Let's see. I think that's about enough right now.
Thank you, sir.
I think I might come back for another term.
Your time's up, but you can come back at the next meeting with another list. Thank you. And questions about fencing? You can see Mr. Blaze right here, he has the schedule. He'd be happy to talk to you about the schedule. Do it after the meeting while we're all here, it'll be fine. Okay, uh, no other cards? No?
No further comment cards.
All right, thank you. So we are going to move to item number five. And we only have one, so it's discussion and action items. On these, we have an order of presentation for our discussion items. We'll have a staff report and presentation, we'll have council questions of staff, we will take, uh, public speakers, we'll have council discussion, and then, uh, council action, which for this particular item is appointments to various city commissions and, um, EDAC, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So with that, we will have our report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are discussing, as you said, the appointments to various city commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. We do have eight scheduled vacancies, two are unscheduled for this opening. EDAC had an unscheduled vacancy with Susan Olmstead Bowen. Historic Preservation Commission was Teresa Edwards and Matthew Potter. Parks and Recreation Commission, Richard Hollum and Jeff Cahann was an unscheduled. The Planning Commission was Danny Ace Avito. Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission was Michael Thompson, Gary Shone, William Naylor, and Sherri Walker. The requirements, um, the Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22.040, requires that you must be a citizen of the United States, be a permanent resident of the city, be at least 18 years of age, take and file with the city clerk the oath required by Section 36507 and the California Government Code, and no felony conviction. The current recruitment, the public notice was released April 2019. The application deadline was June 10th, 2018. A total of 13 applicants received, applications were received, excuse me, there were no applications received for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And we're hoping to have that recruitment extended. The report said June 24th, but that is actually Monday. When I wrote the report, that seemed far away. But if we could extend to July 10th and hopefully receive applications by then and go to council on July 17th to make a determination for EDAC. The current applicants for historic preservation, we have two vacancies, was Teresa Edwards, who's the incumbent. Oh, I'm sorry. And Carolyn Morse. Parks Recreation Commission, we have two vacancies. We have applicants Kathy Burt, Katie Cover, William Naylor. The Planning Commission, we have one vacancy, Danny Ace Avito, which is the incumbent. Streets, Trails and Utilities Commissions, we have four vacancies, and we've received seven applications, and it was Thomas Dames, John Futrell, William Naylor, who's an incumbent, Gary Shone incumbent, Michael Thompson incumbent, Sherri Walker incumbent, Mike Williams. And at this time, you would have, um, public comment if any of the applicants are here to speak, and then we will take a vote.
Okay. Real quick, does council have any questions of staff?
I have one. And we'll probably do it, and you'll cover on the election. On the ones that have the short replacements that we have, the unfulfilled, um, yeah, unscheduled, thank you, I knew the word, unscheduled vacancies, how are you going to determine on the voting which one of those gets that?
I'm sorry, um, with the unscheduled vacancies, since we only have two, I think, for the Parks and Recreation Commission, um, we have, we would have to make that determination. I'll have to look into that. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay, I was just, uh-
Yeah. I'd have to double check on that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? So Dana, do you want us to make a motion to go ahead and extend the deadline for EDAC just right off the top and get that done for you?
Correct. If we can do that first, and then we will go to voting on the applicants.
After a public comment, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to extend the recruitment period for EDAC until July 10th, 2019. So it's been properly moved and seconded to extend recruitment for EDAC?
Uh, discussion, real quick.
Oh, under discussion, yeah.
Are we having, is EDAC meet here at the end of the month?
Yes.
The commission, okay, so they'll have time to-
Get further-
Go find out their, through their own members for an recruitment process.
We'll be, we'll be sending out some emails to other applicants from different commissions that were not chosen to maybe bring them onboard for EDAC.
And that and pass to EDAC applicants.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So then we are going to go ahead and move on to public speakers for this discussion item. So our first card.
The first speaker is Bill Naylor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the privilege of being able to serve on the Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission for the last four years. I learned a lot, and I hope that we were able to do a number of good things within the city. I know we did, actually. I also wanted to let you know why I got, or I requested to be on the Streets, Trails and Utilities, because I am an avid horse rider, and I do a lot of patrol riding throughout the state, and I do routinely ride the trails here in Norco and then observe issues and try to report those and get those fixed. We were actually able to start a volunteer program through the Parks and Recreation Program and the city to be able to help maintain the trails. Second of all, I'd like to let you know that I have applied for the Streets, Trails and Utilities again as an incumbent, but I would also like you to consider letting me switch over to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Again, I'm very interested in the equestrian area, and Parks and Recreation does take care of about a third of the trails in Norco, so it would not be a far-fetched thing for me to just be switching from one commission to the other. I do enjoy working with Parks and Recreation. I have 25 years of experience in that area, and I have had an opportunity to work with everything from sports leagues to the city zoo, to facility rentals and equipment rentals, all that kind of stuff. So I really feel that I could be a real asset to the Parks and Recreation Commission. If I have a choice, that would be the commission I would prefer to be on, but I did put in an application for both, and I'd like to be able to serve in one way or the other again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Mike Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. Name is Mike Williams. I'm a ten-year resident of the City of Norco, and I did submit application for the Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission. I feel that this is a good time for me, after living here for 10 years, I've got a, a fair idea about how this city operates. Got 40 years of transportation experience, so streets, highway safety, so on, is, is a good push for me. I've got a lot to add there, I think. As an equestrian, I'm involved with the National Forest Service, City Crest Trail Association, Backcountry Horsemen. Of course, we just did our little ride from Norco to Bishop- Of course, we just did our little ride from Norco to Bishop, and in pre-riding all of that, 15 to 20 miles on some days, we never left the city. So, I got to see a lot in the City of Norco as far as trails went. And I think I've got a lot to offer there. I'm anxious to work with the council and with the staff and with the City of Norco. I want to work with the citizens. I'm sure that many of the citizens that aren't anxious to be in front of everyone like this, behind the scenes, they've got a lot of good ideas. And I appreciate the opportunity, and I ask for your support in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Cahann.
Tough crowd out there.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to address on this topic. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission for seven years. Just due to some personal and family obligations, I felt it was necessary that I step down. So, because of me, you have an unscheduled vacancy. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Katie Cover. She's in Washington, DC. She's not here to personally present herself. I believe she emailed you, though. And I've worked with her on the Parade of Lights and Christmas Festival Committee, and she's taken over for Patover Street on organizing all the different parades in town. I think she would be a fantastic asset, and I would recommend that you consider her to fulfill my final year on the short vacancy. And then, I wholeheartedly endorse Bill Naylor to move over. I think with his 25 years of Parks and Rec experience, he would be a fantastic asset to Parks and Rec. And then, that would also open up a fantastic opening for Mike Williams with his background with Backcountry Horsemen and all of his other equestrian and trail experience. He'd be a fantastic asset for Streets and Trails. So, I would ask that you would consider those recommendations, and thank you again for allowing me to serve the city.
Our next speaker is Teresa Edwards.
Hello, Mayor and council. I just want to say real quick that I've really been honored to be on the Historic Preservation Commission the last four years. It went really fast, and I feel like I was just getting started. So, I appreciate your consideration. I'd be honored again to continue the work, and we have lots of things that we want to do for Norco. As far as Carolyn's concerned, she's not here. She wants to be here, but she's camping at the river with her family. And we were texting this afternoon, and she's just really eager to be on this commission with us. She's really great. She found us, basically, when we were doing the exhibit for the First Horse Week, our First Horse Week exhibit in April. We put up a bunch of displays and stuff, and then we had the exhibit open that weekend, and Diane Still, one of our commission members, posted some pictures of our exhibit on Facebook that same day, like in real time. And one of the items happened to be an article that Carolyn had written for Pony Express, like back in the '70s. And she saw that on the Facebook page. So, next thing we know, she's walking in with her two granddaughters, walks right up to the poster and says, "That's me." And we're like, "That's incredible," you know? And she never left. She's been coming in every Friday when we work, and she said, "I'm here to work," and she's got a lot of skills. And we're just so overjoyed to have her as an applicant. So, thank you very much for everything, and you'll be hearing more from us in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Mike Thompson.
Good evening, council. And wow, I can't believe how fast this four-year term that you allowed me to serve on has gone by so fast. But as we've got a, as a long-term resident, 35 years and before the freeway, and an ex-equestrian, retired, I have got, still got a lot of work to do as we've been working on backyard trails in a situation with, where we just made a really good trail plan. Some of the trails that were questionable have disappeared and whatnot. I'd like to continue on a lot of that work, and I hope that I can continue to be a voice for some of the other residents in town who are not going to move because they've retired and their horses have gotten old and retired. And I think that's something I have to offer, and I'd like to continue on this commission and keep the city and Norco moving in the direction for all the citizens and continue the lifestyle as much as difficult as it's getting to keep. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
There are no further comment cards.
Okay. Very good. So, we'll bring it back up. Is there any discussion from council? All right. So, you guys have your ballots in front of you, correct?
Everybody should have your ballot in front of you. If you'd please vote. And I'll collect those when you're complete.
I have three.
No.
I have two.
It was just if there was a tie. Or if you made a mistake, I gave you extras.
Okay. Real quick, colleagues up here, Andy just asked if we want to determine who will do the short terms now. And is it just the, we're just looking at the one unscheduled vacancy, right, on Parks and Rec? So, we're just looking at that particular spot?
Correct. Because the other unscheduled would be the EDAC.
Okay.
So, Parks and Rec, correct. And I was just reading, yeah, you can make the determination now. It's up to you to vote on who you would like to fill that position if we're unscheduled.
So, what's the pleasure of the council? Filling the one-year term?
Whoever gets the lowest vote.
Is that agreeable to everyone? Whoever gets the lowest vote?
You don't have that computer program, so...
So, that's good?
If it's tied, flip a coin?
That's what I think. Flip a coin if it's a tie.
You got two heads.
Oh, my goodness. So, everybody's agreeable to that? I'll take that as a yes.
Okay. Thank you. We have the results. For the Historic Preservation Committee, Teresa Edwards, the incumbent, received five yes votes. Historic Preservation Committee member for Carolyn Morse received five yes votes. So, both have been voted in for their vacancies. For Parks and Recreation Commission, you were to vote for two. Katie Cover had five yes votes. William Naylor had four yes votes. Kathy Burt had one yes vote. So, Katie Cover will take the full position, and William Naylor will take out the final unscheduled with his four votes. Planning Commission, Danny Acevito, the incumbent, had five yes votes. For Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission, we had Gary Shown, the incumbent, with five yes votes. Michael Thompson, the incumbent, with three yes votes. Sherri Walker, the incumbent, with five yes votes. Mike Williams with five yes votes. William Naylor, the incumbent, had one, and Thomas Dom's had one. So, the four that have been chosen for Streets, Trails is Gary Shown, Michael Thompson, Sherri Walker, and Mike Williams. And that's the end of the vote.
All right. Thank you. So, at this time, we're going to move on to agenda item number six. And I would ask my colleagues, in looking at the audience and looking at the time, if we could take these items out of order and go to item C, and then take a break before we go to the items A and B. So, is that okay with staff and council? Yes? Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
The public hearing for the permit from Animal Control first? Frank, is that okay with you? All right. Excellent. So, we'll go ahead and take the agenda out of order. We're going to go to item 6C, which is an approval of a wild vicious animal permit. And this is a public hearing, so I just want to review kind of the order and the protocol for everyone. We'll have a staff report and presentation. Council will then ask their questions of staff. I will open the public hearing. In that time, public can submit cards and have their three minutes apiece. We'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to council for discussion, and then council will take their action.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Before you tonight is an application request for a Norco wild vicious animal permit. Give you a little facts and history on this. Facts, on March 9, 2019, the Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control notified the City of Norco that an Australian cattle dog mix named Maverick was in our jurisdiction and was deemed potentially dangerous and was released to Northwest Boxer Rescue in Woodinville, Washington. Northwest Boxer Rescue adopted and transferred ownership of that dog to Robert Stern, a resident of Norco. By this transfer of the potentially deemed dangerous dog falls under the City of Norco jurisdiction and its codes. Under Norco's code, Section 8.05, with any domesticated animal deemed wild or vicious, there must submit a Norco wild vicious animal permit, application to Norco Animal Control requesting the animal to reside within Norco City limits. This process requires a hearing by the city council to approve the permit, and so here we are. We have two maps here for your review. The location map...
Green. The green button.
Green button. There we go. Okay. The location map here, this is where the resident resides at. This is 2993 Hillside Avenue. Over here to the right is a zoning map, so you can see that the house is R110, which is residentially zoned, and it's surrounded by A120, which is agriculturally zoned area. Based on the application, staff conducted an investigation as to the evaluation and conclusions reached by Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control regarding the dog. Norco Animal Control also inspected the property where the dog will be housed, evaluated the animal, and provided recommendations and conditions for the city council to consider in the application for the permit. Findings, the dog Maverick was deemed potentially dangerous by Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control as a result of three dog bites whereby the dog got off the property and bit three different individuals. As a result of the bites, Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control deemed the dog potentially dangerous based on the previous owner waiving his rights to a hearing. The proposed wild animal vicious permit is for an Australian cattle dog mix and allowable under the Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 8.05, but is conditioned based on the city council approval of the permit within the City of Norco limits. Determination, based on the evaluation from the dog owner's trainer, staff's evaluation along with the city's contract evaluator, Dog on Fun, Maverick has shown no signs of aggression towards people or animals as noted in the Dog on Fun evaluation and observation, which is part of the staff report, Exhibit E. Maverick has completed over 40 hours of dog training with the owner's trainer, along with a third-party expert trainer approved by the city, Dog on Fun, who has provided an evaluation and observation letter, which is part of the staff report. Maverick has continued to be socialized on and off the property while accompanied by a leash and cage muscle as part of his ongoing training conditions and requirements. Norco Animal Control Services has deemed that the applicant's property is in good repair and has provided safeguards and redundancies to house the canine. So, let's go over some of those redundancies with an aerial view of the home that staff has created. So, this is a staff-created slide. This shows the dwelling here, the front yard and grass area. The orange dots or dashes here indicate a chain link fence. The purple here is an electric fence that opens up to get in and out of the property. Again, over here, this dark brown area would be a wooden fence that surrounds most of the property. And on this back wall here, this is a center block wall. We have a crate here where the dog will be kept while the owner is gone inside the house. We also have two other additional kennels, one here on the side of the house, and then a back one, which is approved by Norco Animal Control because it has a top, it's under a patio, and it has a cement bottom, so he can't dig out or climb out. So, for example, if the dog was in the house for it to get onto the street, it would have to get out of the crate, somehow get out of the house. If it got into the backyard, it would have to go through this chain link fence, this wooden fence, and then this chain link fence to get to the street. If it was already got out of the crate and got into the front yard, you still have the chain link fence and... chain link fence for him to get out onto the street. So those are the redundancies set up to keep the dog from getting to the public. Here's an example of the homeowner as we are approaching the house. This here is the electric gate with the solar panel right here. Here's the backside of the electric gate showing the mechanism that opens the gate right here. This is an example of the front yard. This is on the south side of the house where there's a chain link gate in order to get into the backyard. This is on the north side of the property where there's a wooden fence separating the backyard from the front yard, and there's also a kennel just on the other side of that wooden fence, as you'll see shortly. This is an example of the backyard of the property. Dog kennel on the north side of the property, no top or cement floor. So this is an example of the kennel. Back here would be that earlier picture where you saw the wooden fence. This is a closer view of the same kennel. It has a dirt floor and no top to it. This is the one approved by Animal Control. This dog kennel has a cement floor, has a top to it that's enclosed, and it's underneath a patio to keep it away from the elements. And it measures six feet high by five feet wide by five feet long, although in the picture it doesn't look that big, but it is. There's pictures of Maverick with the owner. We asked her to bring him out of the house and present him to us. Maverick was well behaved that day. There's an example of the crate that will be used to house Maverick inside the house, as you saw in earlier slides. Recommendation Conditions of Approval: Staff has reviewed the recommendations and conditions with the applicant, and the applicant has indicated that they agree with the conditions but would ask for a reduction in the limits of liability to $300,000. The wild vicious animal permit has been reviewed by the city attorney and PERMA, our risk management group, who has recommended a $1 million general liability insurance policy listing Norco as an additionally insured with waiver of subrogation being taken out on the dog. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions council may have. Also, in the audience, we have the applicant who has some information she would like to provide, and I also have the dog trainer that provided multiple stress tests on the dog for the City of Norco, here as well that can answer questions for you as well.
Okay, excellent. Does council have any questions of staff?
Yes.
We'll start with Berwin.
Frankie.
Yes, sir.
Good presentation. Looked like they got him pretty well secured and everything, but I've got a question on the front gate.
Okay.
Of course, you can't tell by a picture, but how much of a gap does this have between the bottom of the gate and the driveway?
Well, let's back up and see if I can do that.
Is it enough for him to crawl under?
No, it's a very small gap. I'd hate to guess, but I would say it's a few inches. There we go. There's the gate. The biggest area I would say would be over here, if you want to see the backside of it. There's not a whole lot there underneath the gate, maybe a few inches. I don't think the Queensland Hiller could get underneath that, to be honest with you.
Where the driveway is.
Okay, well, like I said, the picture don't do it justice.
It does, and it's a gate that's a lever open, so the whole gate opens at once.
Right.
And then closes all at once.
Okay, thank you.
Frank?
Yes.
Good report.
Thank you.
Very well prepared. My question is this, that going over all this report, would you take this dog home to your family?
Initially, when I crossed my desk, I would say no, but because of experience, the training the dog has gone through and our stress tests, this dog has turned around, and I do believe it deserves a second chance.
Good.
And I would take it home.
Appreciate it, thanks.
No problem.
Frank, I do have, I don't have an issue with a dog, because how did it get through from a boxer program?
Well, that was the rescue that rescued it. It's a boxer rescue, but apparently they rescue other dogs other than boxers. And Robert Stern was the person who adopted it from them, and she happened to be a Norco resident, and then we are here today to follow through with her getting that permit.
I'm just curious, that didn't make any sense.
It doesn't, but there's a lot of rescues out there.
They're working cattle dogs. Sometimes they have energy and they like that. But hey, that can be corrected. I don't have a problem with that. My issue comes back to the liability.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm reading your report here and all the other cities that have the liability insurance requirements. And our city attorney and our PERMA was wrecking a $1 million general liability insurance policy, listing the City of Norco as additionally insured with waiver of subrogation being taken out on the dog. And the applicant is asking us to reduce that to $300,000.
Correct. That was the original requirements of LA County, that she pull a $300,000 policy, which she did take out. But our PERMA, our risk management group, deemed it necessary to have a $1 million policy. Again, that's up to you guys to review if you want to lessen that risk or leave it alone.
And I guess I'm going to go with Colin, since you're in here and you're such a vocal guy tonight. Tell me why this young lady needs a million bucks and what's what? I mean, the city, I mean, we're taking this, the five of us are going to make a decision for the city to accept the responsibility to allow this dog, this permit, to be done. And I don't have any issue with the dog, but I do, I'm looking at the $1 million general liability, and explain to me why.
Can I interject? Councilman Hoffman, the city attorney did not recommend the $1 million. Our PERMA risk management group recommended it. The city attorney reviewed the application, reviewed the conditions, reviewed the incident reports that we forwarded to them from LA County. It was PERMA, the risk management group, that recommended a $1 million to make sure that the city is thoroughly protected and added the waiver of subrogation. In our discussions with them, it is strictly a business decision by the city council what they want to set at those limits of liability. Our LA County was set at $300,000. There are other jurisdictions that are $300,000 or around that range. But that was our risk manager's recommendation, so we needed to bring it to you.
That's correct.
Okay, well, I still want, since we pay him to sit up here, and just his legal expertise on this is more or less as the $1 million or the $300,000. I mean, it's, the five of us are taking a risk if we approve this for the city, and that's why I just want to make sure that we're not putting our city financially at risk. You're just the $1 million versus the $300,000.
I think the answer as an attorney is, of course, get a million, but the, I've taken some pragmatic opinions before, and you have to take a look, you can't mitigate every risk there is. In this case, you have to think about what kind of damage is the dog going to do? And in a horrible case scenario, the dog could attack a child seriously. And if the child's seriously attacked, you're looking at over $300,000. The chances of that you have to consider, you also have to consider the fact that cities generally have some immunities for granting permits. No immunity is ironclad. There's no way I can guarantee we won't get sued. We will if a dog gets attacked. I can't guarantee that the lawsuit won't be successful, although I think we have some solid defenses in that case. And looking at the risk, you know, a million's obviously better than $300,000, but from a business perspective, you as a council are authorized to make the decision to lower it to $300,000. I think that decision's probably a reasonable one if you decide to go that way. I wouldn't think that it was unreasonable or overly risky. It's just the council's decision to decide 300 versus a million. It is possible that you could have a case involving a million dollars worth of liability, but it's unlikely.
Fair answer, thank you.
Ted?
Go ahead.
What I would suggest is typically all businesses, a million dollars is a starting point on Why don't we ask the applicant what the cost impact is, since she's buying the insurance of the $300,000 policy compared to the $1 million policy?
And I'm sure that's on her homeowner's insurance.
I don't.
And I agree with you.
I don't think it's that much of an impact, but I'd like to know that.
Come on, up, Robert.
I'm sorry, I'm not going out of order.
No, I don't think so, because it says questions of staff, and Frank had said that she's available to answer.
Policy versus the $1 million policy, if you know.
Good evening. I don't know that answer. I don't know that answer as yet. I do know it might be problematic to get that much coverage based on his record currently. I have the $300,000, I'm good with that. It's all, that's what was required to get the dog, so that's why we're trying to stay with that. I mean, I understand why, you know, you would want to, more coverage, because more coverage is always better, but at the same time, I'm not sure that we can actually obtain it.
If I can ask, how long have you had the dog right now?
Four months.
Thank you.
Kevin, you have a question?
So I'm in the kid business, and I'll tell you, a dog bites a kid, and it'll be way above $300,000. So my only concern is a kid reaching into your gate. Would the dog ever be in your front yard without one of you watching?
One of the stipulations set by Norco Animal Control is that he is not left in the front yard unattended.
Okay, that's my, just reaching through and petting the nice dog and I'm good, thank you.
Just to add, there's a condition that the dog must be muzzled any time that it is socialized or off property.
Does council have any other questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, so you're good for now, thank you. Does council have any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank, for your report.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
Yes, we do. The first card is Ben Hartley.
Thank you, council. It's been a while since the view of you. I just want to say, I've actually met this dog, and it is, I'm actually thinking maybe the owner pulled the okie dokie on LA County and switched the dog because it is non-aggressive. It pretty much lays around. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the $1 million policy. I understand, coming from the city, working with the city, I understand the city wants to cover itself, but you're also signing the waiver. So they're not only having to purchase a $300,000 insurance policy, which is on top of their homeowner's insurance, so it's above and beyond, so they technically have two policies, if I understand that correctly. No, single?
Yeah.
Okay. But yes, the dog is extremely docile, so I don't think you're going to have any issues with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council and staff, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for rearranging the agenda so we could get this over and done with earlier. I've known Robert five years, and her fur babies are her kids. Maverick, he is the luckiest dog in the world because she adopted him and rescued him and going through all of this horrible stuff to try to get this permit. And I don't understand why they have to have a $1 million policy. From what I understand, surrounding cities, it's $100,000 or $300,000, so a million sounds excessive. My request is that you do issue the permit. If the permit is not issued, I don't know what other option Robert would have but to put the dog down. So Maverick's a really awesome dog, and she's given him a second life, and it's been here for four months with her, no incidents, so I'd like for her to get that permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bonnie Slager.
Well, I don't agree with the other speakers, but that's my right. Why would you do this when somebody has to have special insurance? The dog may or may not, I guess any dog would, but this dog does have a history, and I have personal experience with a dog chewing up one of my horses, and it was not a pretty sight. The dog came over a six-foot block wall. If you look online, you will see that all the recommendations on aggressive dogs is aggressive dogs should never be in a populated area, and that's why rescue groups should always be in a more rural area. Aggressive dogs, dogs with a history of aggression, should never be in a populated area. I hope you choose not to warrant this, not to allow this. Thank you.
The final speaker, Linda Tain.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Linda Tain, and I'm here in favor of Maverick. I met him when Robert first got him, and my first meeting with him was actually in her vehicle, where he didn't know me, and I opened the back door and just stuck my hand in there, and he licked me. He's not aggressive, and being from a dog owner's perspective and raising Roddys for 35 years, I know an aggressive dog when I see one, and I feel that he has not shown the aggression. And every time we've gone back training-wise with any dog that's shown any aggression whatsoever, most of the time it's owner error. And with that, not knowing his background, not knowing his history, not knowing the owners that had him that turned him in and just discarded him because they didn't want to spend time with him to make him a good dog, I really feel that it's the right thing to do is to give him a chance, give Robert a chance, to prove that he deserves to be here just like everyone else. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have one more?
Good evening. I know nothing about the dog. The only, my only concern in seeing these slides, we have raised and trained dogs for 50 years, and so we currently have dogs that could get out of that chain link kennel. They're wonderful, they're kind, they're sweet, they're wonderful, but they climb right over it. My only concern would be to put a top on it. We've had to put tops on dogs just because we didn't want them to hang theirself after they tried to climb out, but that was my concern, and put a top on the kennels, because if these dogs want to get out, our kennels are on concrete, and they're six feet tall. And currently, our two dogs, one of which is 12 years old, can climb right out. And then when they know they're mad, we're mad at them, they'll climb back in. So that would be just a preventative, but personally, if we had a dog with a reputation like that, and we have had dogs that have been a little aggressive, we never took a chance with that.
Thank you. We do have Pete Dumitoff.
Thank you, mayor, council, folks. I live with Maverick and Robert. I was skeptical a little bit at first, going to LA County Shelter and potentially rescuing Maverick. Once we met him, and I met him and saw how he reacted, the paperwork on the kennel said he had no training. After basic commands that Robert gave Maverick through the chain link, because we couldn't have one-on-one with him only through the chain link, he had commands. He could sit, he could roll over, he was upside down. He let us, you know, pet him through underneath the chain link. And I'm like, you know, we need to give this dog a chance, so we brought him home. And once everything kind of hit the fan, I said, we've got to keep pushing forward. Everything that Frank has presented has been phenomenal. Everybody did a great job in favor of Maverick. Maverick is with us all times. We don't leave him in the yard alone. We don't, we have the kennels in the backyard for a reason. If we need them, they're there, but 100% of the time, the four months that we've had him, we don't leave him alone. If we have to go somewhere, he's in the house, in the kennel, in his crate, and we're not gone very long. I believe he deserves. I believe he deserves a chance and this permit. We don't know what happened with the old owner. It could have been a bad situation. It could have been, like our friend Ben said, that, you know, maybe something was switched, you know, dog for another dog, because the original owner maybe didn't want to give up a bad dog, because he wanted a bad dog. He deserves a chance, and allowing us to get this permit, and giving us the opportunity to prove that he's a good dog would be phenomenal. Figure, give us a chance, he hasn't done anything on our watch, and based on Frank's presentation and the information and videos that you have watched, I'm assuming you watched videos from his valuations, they're pretty, pretty stellar. And again, thank you for reviewing this and giving us the opportunity.
We have Sigrid Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel, staff. Listening to the story about Maverick, many breeds get a bad rap. So I did some real quick research while I was sitting here listening. For an insurance policy between $10,000 and $3,000 for a vicious dog, the deductible is $250 to $2,500, and that means your monthly payment for insurance is going to be roughly about $138 a month. $300,000 is the normal high rate. If you add anything more to that, you are now looking for a general liability umbrella policy of $1 million. That can run a person up to $1,000 a year, in addition to their normal policy. Also, the average claim in 2016, and again, I did the research just now, is about $33,000, so it does not go over $300,000. Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
There are no further speaker cards?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to counsel for discussion. Does counsel have any? Berwin?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've owned about eight or nine of these dogs in my life. They have a long lifespan, take care of them. They can be a very aggressive dog. They require a lot of work and a lot of attention. I mean, you have to make them work to keep their energy level down. I've never had one but one that would ever attempt to bite anybody, and that was if he was in my truck and somebody come up and opened the door to get in. But there's a lot of dogs that are very protective of their vehicles, not just the cattle dogs or whatever. But I never had any other problem with any of them trying to bite or attack, but we worked, we worked with them all the time, we kept them busy, and if, if he's been mishandled before, that was probably his problem. You know, a dog has to love his owner and who's handling him, and they have to understand what he, what he needs to get by. So I have, I have no problem with allowing them to keep the dog. I talked to Frankie, I read all the reports and everything, and Frankie told me what a turnaround the dog had done just in the last few months here. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hoffman?
I'm reading this, the recitals on, from LA, and there are three attacks documented. They were children, they were attacked by a dog, by a two-year-old dog. That dog's a year older now, because that happened last year. Like Berwin, we used to use these dogs all the time on the dairy, and they love to work, and that's what they do. They, that's, they nip at the heels. That's what they're trained for. That's the, that's natural breeding. And we used to use them all the time to get the big bulls out of the breeding pens at Excelsior, because we didn't want to go in there. And we had to put them up at night, because they would continue to work. And they are a working dog. We used to use them up in the ranch, same thing. My brother had, right up there off of Corona, those dogs, you didn't go in his yard because they were working all the time. That's what they did. It seems like the attacks that occurred, and I'm just like, so I'm just reading this report, these are young kids probably walking up and down, and didn't, didn't know how to handle the dog, didn't know what the dog was capable of. Yeah, he attacked three children, but it seems like there's been some training done and things like that. This is Norco, we love our critters, and it's worth probably taking a chance on this dog. I'll agree that $300,000 is probably more reasonable, and I appreciate it, Sigrid, what you said about the cost, because it is costly. So, you know, I'm willing to give the dog a chance, with that.
Any other comments from counsel?
I want to thank you for giving the dog a second chance. I think the $300,000 and the liability, I'm fine with, but what Mrs. Dixon said is, Frank, I'd like to add a condition that, just put a chain link top on that enclosure? That shouldn't be a big impact.
It's condition 14 already in the.
Is it already in there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's conditioned. Oh, I'm sorry, Frank.
All right. So to clear up Linda Dixon's concerns, the first kennel you saw on the side of the house, which had a dirt bottom.
Right.
And no top, that was not approved by Norco Animal Control Services?
The other one is.
The second one is because it does have a top and a cement bottom, and it's over, it's sitting underneath a patio. So it's out of the elements, it can't climb out because it has a top on it, and it can't dig out because it's on a cement bottom. Regardless, I've been told by the owner that when they do leave, they plan on keeping it in the house, in the crate anyways.
Correct.
So, which gives you extra redentations for doing that. But if they do choose to use a kennel, the one that's approved is the one that's on the patio that has a cement bottom and a covered top, not the one that's on the side. I showed that because, just to be transparent, to say, there is another kennel there, but that's not one recommended by Animal Control Services.
And you're good with that? I'm good with that. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Councilman Bash, do you have anything? Well, I just want the public to know, there are 21 conditions for this dog, 21. And so the owners are going above and beyond, as far as due diligence goes, to take care of this dog and give the dog another chance, so. And then I also want the residents to know, in our report and the things that we have, the dog was tested by a trainer, and things like having it on its back and people laying over the top of it. Frank and Animal Control tested that dog without the owner present, not at the house, like running up on the dog, yelling at the dog, doing things that most dogs would become upset about, and the dog showed no aggression, correct, Frank? So I just want residents to know that staff has gone above and beyond to make sure that this is legitimate and not, you know, again, showing due diligence, and thank you, Frank, for the thoroughness of your report. And then also, thank you to the owner's 21 conditions. We approve some building projects that don't have that many conditions, so.
Just as a, as a side note, we do have the dog trainer here as well that did distress testing. If you had questions for her or wanted to pick her brain about the dog, she's here as well for your review if necessary.
So.
Thank you.
May I add, Madam Mayor, the applicant paid for the third-party trainer, who we selected. So that was one of the conditions, too. So that shows that she really cares about trying to do, to do the right thing.
So with that, Councilman Bash? Is there a second?
At $300,000.
Okay, motion to approve at $300,000. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the permit with a $300,000 insurance
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, we still have a couple items on the agenda, they're rather large, our operating budget and capital budget. So counsel would like to take a five-minute break to use the facilities, and we will adjourn for that recess now. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and we're going to proceed with the, back on our regular agenda, and the order is presented. So we're on item 6A, which are public hearings. Again, same thing that we just did, we're going to have a staff report and presentation, counsel questions of staff. I'll have the public hearing, or I'll open the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to counsel for discussion and action. So item 6A is approval and adoption of the City of Norco operating budget for fiscal year 1920, and authorizing the appropriations therein, and amending the fiscal year 1819 budget. So Gina, you are up with your report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and counsel members. Tonight, we'll be requesting review and adoption of resolution number 2019-37, approving and adopting the city operating budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and authorizing appropriations therefrom, as well as adopting resolution number 2019-38, approving amendment to fiscal year 2018, 2019 annual budget, and authorizing changes in revenues thereto. And I will move forward with a presentation, and I'd like to thank you. I've calculated you have spent about probably 11 or 12 hours listening to fee-study discussions and budget discussions over the last five months or so, and I will get into a little detail here, because I have to, but I will move quickly through the presentation. Now, in beginning to, to present our fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating budget, I'll be going through some of the numbers that were presented over the last few months, and also revise along the way, I'll go through that journey as well. The operating budget for the city, which does not include CIP, is $41,662,825. This includes general fund, water, sewer, gas tax, NPDS, I'll get into the definition later, housing, miscellaneous grants, CDBG, and AQMD funds. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund, with total projected expenditures of $21,590,519, and revenues of $20,847,337. This is resulting in a $743,182 decrease in fund balance, and our estimated fund balance as of June 30th, 2019, will be, we're estimating, $12,861,346, and projected fund balance at the year end of 2020, of $12,118,164. And just a few more lines getting through the dollars. Our estimated water fund expenditures of, expenditures for the water fund of $10,804,166, and revenues of $13,073,0178. Estimated sewer fund expenditures of $7,170,00310, and revenues of $7,764,321. So that's the detail. And just an overview of the expenditures that we've been discussing over the last few months. Our budget is stable, with no new programs or full-time employees. Our funding is estimated for sheriff's contract to increase by 5%, or $306,000. We have an estimated 5% increase in our county fire contract of $222,000. Our UAL, or unfunded accrued liability, is increasing by $284,000. And our current salary adjustments are 3%, which, as discussed earlier, includes Public Works Director salary adjustment and a reclassification from a management analyst position to a communications manager. City employees continue to pay their full share of employee portion of pension contribution. And the city continues to provide reduced funding to pay down post-retirement healthcare cost liability. This includes $100,000 towards a circulation element, that's being paid for by a fee that was adopted and implemented in the current fiscal year. We currently have $100,000, and we're most likely going to continue to accrue that revenue for other general plan elements. We're also including the budget of FEMA reimbursement that we received a few years ago regarding a flooding occurrence, and the federal government's requiring us to return some funds regarding the purchase of K-Rails. We're including increased water costs, and our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDS, fund is supporting itself, itself this year. We're lucky in that sense, other cities don't have that ability, but we are going to be spending more for the required permit processes this next year, so we may be, in the future, dipping into the general fund to assist with that. This is a chart of our expenditures, and I should let you know, in presenting this, it is, we have an interesting journey here. I've been showing budget-to-budget comparison. I could have easily shown a year-end-to-budget comparison, but what you see here is how we adopted the budget, it was amended in February, and then how it compares to our current budget. When you look at the numbers, the dollar, for fire safety, for fire and safety, public safety in total, you'll see that may not look like $500,000 there. That's because we're comparing year-end to budget in that larger conversation. When we budget our, I indicate this in the staff report, when we do budget, we budget conservatively, we budget fully our salaries. If there's a vacancy, that savings does occur. So we tend to compare budget to budget, and then we'll come back at mid-year and adjust. So that can help us with some surprises that I'll be showing you shortly. It doesn't happen often, but it happened this year. In terms of revenues, we are looking at an increase of $470,000 or 2% as compared to the 1819 amended budget, and $184,000 less than projected. Now, this is relatively flat. We do have some strong revenues that are coming, interest earnings, because we have a reserve that I'll be talking about shortly, and we have some hotel revenue that's coming in that I'll be discussing. We are conservative in our development revenue projections. These are the projections I come back to in February, indicating that we've got some development money. We had, in terms of sales tax, when you look in your budget document, you're going to see that we received, we're going to receive $7.5 million in sales tax this year. A lot of that, about $400,000 is prior year, because the state of California has a software system they implemented that's very difficult for businesses to give their sales tax receipts, and very difficult for the state to distribute out. And I've just been told today, they see it continuing. So, and it may impact or measure our revenue slightly, it just means it'll be delayed. So I just want to give you a heads-up on that. Property tax is increasing by $153,000 due to increased assessed valuations and residual tax increment from our successor agency bond refundings. And the next bullet there I just discussed. TOT, we're estimating $100,000. That originally was just for six months, and I thought it was actually a little aggressive, but I'm hearing that Wood Springs will open in the summer. So we could have a nice mid-year surprise on that. Again, interest earnings is going up because of our reserves, and some healthy investments, healthy and safe investments. We're seeing a continued decrease in our state reimbursement for pension and healthcare liabilities from the former RDA. The city is still pursuing that with the state. And here is an overview of our revenues, and you'll see it's, property taxes are increasing, and that's great, assessed valuations are up. The cities are, of course, sensitive to the economy, we're not anticipating a downturn that could be in the next few years, but at this point, property taxes, assessed valuations are looking good. Our VLF is, is also increasing in a stable manner. And you see the interest income of $135,000 increase there. One small note, administrative overhead transfers, I'll get to that, that is an increase in our cost allocation plan distribution from our water and sewer fund. Now, this is the beginning of the journey that we brought to you in May, and it showed that we were estimating a year-end surplus of $657,000, and a deficit in the next year of $986,000. And we, we discussed this journey at that time. Then, the meeting a few weeks ago, we talked about some more changes, and I'll briefly go over those. We are looking at an overhead charge to our storm drain fund of $209,000, and that's included in our amendment to the current fiscal year. We're also, we just received residual tax increment increase of $69,000. We're also, we just received residual tax increment increase of $69,000 and above our projected amount. And a reduction in our CAL FIRE projections of $190,000. Our proposed budget is, includes an increase to our fee study of $153,000. Again, that's conservative at this point. And we took the residual, we're estimating we're going to get the same amount next year for residual tax increment, so that impacts our next year's revenue. For expenditures, we looked at, we're seeing a reduction in CAL FIRE projections of $200,000, a CPI increase of $80,000, a FEMA reimbursement, as I mentioned, of $49,000, and miscellaneous adjustments of $25,000. An additional $20,000 impact to the general fund for the upgrade to the communications manager and salary adjustment for public works director. Now, this brings us to the final look for how we are for, as of June 30th, 2018. As you can see, we're projecting a $1.1 million revenue over expenditures. We don't like to say surplus, totaling $12.8 million. And again, just want to stress, as I have stressed the last few weeks, this is one-time revenue and one-time expenditures. It's like getting your IRS surplus back or, if you got one. And you want to put that away and spend it on one-time item. And then for next year, you've got, for year-end, 2019, we're looking at a $743,000 deficit, which will be covered by, creates a balanced budget by working on a reserve in this particular case. And we're ending with a $12.1 million surplus, that fund balance, excuse me. And briefly, our water fund will have a rate increase on July 1st. It is looking at a $5.9 million working capital as of June 30th with $2.2 million for the rate stabilization and operation reserves. In terms of the sewer fund, we are looking at a 1.7 million in operating reserves and 1.9 million available for sewer capital. And this is all ending June 30th, 2020. I'll be back in February to share with you how the water and sewer fund did in the current fiscal year and we'll look at transferring money to the capital fund at that time. And just as a reminder, I believe this is the third year we are not increasing the sewer rates because of the significant improvement in the financial position of the sewer fund. Our information technology fund will have an IT assessment plan this year, as well as the implementation of a community development software, as discussed earlier. And this will be, will complement and be a part of our citywide ERP program, our financial And we do have one budget request that is outstanding. It's $30,000 for a CAL Recycle consultant to assist in implementing the outreach for SB 1383. They'll be conducting inspections expected by CAL Recycle and conduct outreach expected by CAL Recycle. And finally, the budget amendment for the current fiscal year. This is for the administrative overhead. Over the last few years, city staff has worked on flood control projects and we are moving that admin overhead to the general fund where it is, was used for that particular project. And that is included as an amendment. And the water and sewer fund, we're just doing a little cleanup. This is our first year of transferring funds from the water and sewer fund. I budgeted originally an amount in last year's budget and then we made the adjustment in mid-year. And if you look at the budget, I did not remove the original budget transfer. So it's an inflated budget amount. The actual is correct. So we're making a budget adjustment in the water and sewer fund on that transfer. And that is it. If you have any questions on the budget for staff or...
Does council have any questions of staff? Councilman Hoffman?
I have, and I'm reading this, and so there are no changes to the sheriff's current budget staffing. Still, I think we're keeping the traffic officer and the CSO as we had approved last year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And lieutenant, has, have we figured out our, the other sergeant position, has that been filled yet, the county paid position?
No, it hasn't been filled yet.
Okay. And so just a clarification and checking, we're supposed to be at seven, supervisor for every seven on patrol. Per decision was made during the Tahisha Miller situation. I know that's years ago, the shooting that occurred. That was something that came out that was approved. So somehow or another, in our, in our discussion, in a little history here, when this position, the department was a sergeant position until Ross Cooper came along and he changed that position to a lieutenant position and we got the buildings here in this, and we increased the size. So somewhere along the line, we got two sergeants here. And so just, that's a little history and I don't know if you had a chance to find that out, is we got the two sergeants here because of that. And I know there's a sergeant shortage, so hopefully we'll be able to backfill that position for you this year. So, and then on the, on your budget request, we did talk earlier about the $25,000 for the naming rights program and if the rest of the council can agree with me, I'm not advocating that, but perhaps come mid-year, we look at, not the naming rights, but we have a beautiful facility up there. And somehow or another, and I'm sure Councilman Newton probably has some numbers that will tell you, that it probably costs us about anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000 to put a siding on that wall, that we can build ourselves an advertising wall inside there. And perhaps we could throw that at Andy, your staff, and economic development. Let's see if we can start selling some space in that wall. And I'm just asking this, is to look at it mid-year, come back to us with a deal that we probably can look at making some revenue on that. Because if we're not going to have somebody go out and hustle down a naming, then let's do it ourselves. Maybe Diana McGrew can figure out how to sell the thing. Without a good budget. Thank you, Gina.
Other questions of staff? Councilman Newton?
Just to follow up on Councilman Hoffman's budget, you should be sitting down there. $60,000, it's going to run us about $42,000 to $44,000 now. But if there's any more Trump tariffs, that steel price will go higher to the $60,000, okay? So just be aware of that. But that's the current price today on what Ted's proposing.
I just, probably take a five-year return.
It would come down about 20 feet, Berwin. All the way across the east sidewall. No engineering will be required because it was originally designed, it was with that skirting, considered it an enclosed building.
Other questions of staff? I have one. Community outreach still isn't in the budget. So can I get an explanation why that is when there was kind of a direction from council last time to include that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the last time I think we explained that we're still trying to look at the, how to reorganize the community outreach and part of that is reclassifying the management analyst position to communications manager position so we can develop a comprehensive program. I think we did advise you at that time, at that time, that once we know that what that cost is, we will come back to you with a request to have that appropriated into the budget.
So that wouldn't take place until mid-year?
It can take place anytime before the mid-year. Their budget adjustments can be made at any time.
Okay, so then I'm just going to put it out there that my expectation is it would be done by mid-year, if not sooner than that, since it was a directive from council. Any other questions or comments?
I want to comment to that. I just want to caution that we don't, I'm totally on board with what you just said, Madam Mayor, but, but the creative side of it is something you don't rush. And I went through, as we began to talk about this, and I've looked at about 200 cities and looked at their video programs and most are really bad. They don't sell the city, they all look the same. And I think that, I think we got really lucky with the Measure R ones. We were able to put those together and they came out really, really well. But I just think we need to take our time, create a team, and I think that maybe what needs to happen is, in order to form this, we really make sure that staff understands exactly what we want to sell and how we want to sell it. Because this could look real, just looking at some of these other cities, it could look really, really bad. And I think we could do it real, like I say, whoever, when yours were put together, they looked really good. And again, I like the idea of the mid, mid-year, but, and I would like to put a fire under the whole thing, but I also know we shouldn't rush it. Creativity is not something you can, there's a whole bunch of things that I think go into this. We're a very unique city and I would like to make sure we capture that right out of the box.
Right.
And I agree with you.
Yeah, and I get where you're coming from. I guess in the budgeting process, putting a placeholder or encumbering some money upfront isn't committing to starting the process tomorrow.
Do you want to make a motion and to add $50,000 to the budget or?
And I agree with Robin, is, we have a couple of events and maybe I'm mistaken. And so we're not going to do the community outreach before then, with going to the fair and things like that? That's been kind of shelved then?
No, we're planning to go to the, to the fair.
Okay, where we have community things. And then this would be on top of that, correct?
That's correct.
So $0 would be spent, but the city would still be at the rodeo or the fair?
Yeah, as you know, there are staff time that those who participate in the community outreach are exempt employees, those who don't get paid for overtime. And that is how we've done it. This time, obviously, we need to buy some supplies. We have had some promotional supplies. We'll do that again. That usually doesn't cost a lot of money that we couldn't find anywhere in the current budget to, to get going. Some other things we are looking at is actually involves some IT recording equipment that will cost some money. We're still in the process of evaluating those and determining those costs. We certainly can have appropriate, some contingency in the budget to do that, but again, our goal is, we want to look at what we're going for and have a good cost estimate for that.
I think Ted's on to something though, that, you know, I wasn't thinking about that. I think that maybe we need to be filming some of these things and do it with equipment that's very good. I think probably, I mean, if you want to do it really right, you have three cameras. You have two Steadicams. You're kind of the resident expert at the moment on all this, but maybe, maybe by the next council meeting, you could get back to us on what a, the cameras would cost, get some nice cannons or whatever you, whatever you decide to get.
I just don't want us to discontinue it.
No, no, I think you're on to something.
But we're out there and we need to be, we as a city need to be out in front of the public. They need to be aware of what is going on as part of our transparency. But it helps us because we learned last year that folks all of a sudden realized, can I do that? They didn't know. They, you sit in that booth and they just, and, you know, Cheryl and Kelly and everybody else that manned that booth did an excellent job of doing what we're supposed to be doing is promoting a city. So we're not the far-off area. We're out in the public eye. And that, I just wanted to see that continue. And yes, we have to have the fancy media, but nothing better than sitting down and talking to them one-on-one and handshaking with people. It's a good deal. That's just my two cents. So I don't want to see that.
So we're talking about two different things.
I want to see, I want to see money spent there and doing that.
So do we, do we add to the budget a placeholder of X number of dollars? What do you think you need, Andy? Or are you okay with where you're at now? You understand the directive and everything?
We can start by probably $25,000. $25,000 as a placeholder. Again, when we determine how much we really need in terms of equipment and supplies and we'll come back to you and we can amend that number.
So do you want to add $25,000 to the budget? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's a good deal and like Robin said, we get this thing, we've got it going, we keep it rolling. We don't let it sit around and get stale because then you run out of ideas. But I like your idea of, like, events we have, get them on film where you can throw them in on a little video or something to show what we're, we're all about. But I don't want, I don't want it to die either because that was a successful program last year.
Is there any way you can say, what did we have in the budget last year for community outreach approximately?
I can look that up.
Okay. And I think from our last meeting, the direction of council was that we were going to keep community outreach and we weren't going to bring the balance down to zero. There was to be funding allowed in that category.
It, for 1718, $8,900 was spent and projected the current year only $1,200, but I believe there's other costs elsewhere in the budget, an IT fund. What I know about the Measure R experience was it was staff time and the mayor's time and there really wasn't that much cost.
We're cheap.
That was low budget. You're welcome.
$20,000, $25,000 would be adequate.
I am aware that the cameras that were purchased when I was involved with IT are failing. As you might recall, some meetings, they haven't been taped properly because the cameras failed. So we definitely need new cameras.
But I was referring to those.
That could come out of the IT budget. IT is under whose department? So it can come out of Parks and Rec.
But just so everyone knows, Matt's been working on the media source of this and has put together a package. So we've been working on numbers to present to Andy. They would look at the videography part of it, what do we need? Because there's also, it's not only the video, but you got to come back and then you got to edit it and do all those other things. So there's a whole process and Matt's done a great job of putting some stuff together for us to have the city manager look at. But that doesn't take away from the community outreach, which is going to be part of the whole overall plan.
Right.
And actually, in some of the discussions we've had and that, the community outreach, the pamphlets, one of the most popular ones was our little three-folder snap, you know, that's a great, has all the information in there, but things like that that really catch it. We've even talked about doing surveys to find out how we can better communicate to the public. So all of those are part of the overall staff discussion on how do we keep it moving as Berwin said, don't let it get stale.
I'll put you on the spot, Kevin. You sit on that Norco College Board. I'm sure they have a audiovisual department over there that would probably send some interns over here that would probably help us.
Colleges have the best equipment of anybody.
And I'm sure that...
That woman has stuff you would not believe.
And I'm sure that even Robin has some stuff for the high school, it's pretty cool.
Well, actually, we're trying to buy a bunch of stuff for Norco High School to help sell it, so.
So let's, so I'm sure that you'll find a way to get Brian's staff and get Matt the right kind of stuff and maybe they'll send some interns over here for some student credit to put us together a nice visual program. to put us together a nice visual program.
And Matt also has the right, getting ready to fill that position, so.
It's some interns.
All right. So do we need to, do we need to make a motion, or is it just because we've had the discussion that that adjustment can be made?
No, I think we have a recommended budget. This would be an addition to that recommended budget, so.
So I make a motion to approve the budget with an additional $25,000.
There you go.
And there was actually also the CalRecycle item, wasn't sure if that was also approved.
Would be in the package, correct? Or does that have to be done separately? Separately?
It wasn't included.
The CalRecycle. Okay, so that has to have a separate motion.
Or you can make a motion.
I will redo my motion to also include the CalRecycle.
Okay, so it's been moved, and does the second still stand?
Second, yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve our operating budget with the inclusion of $25,000 for community outreach and the $30,000 for the CalRecycle program. Oh, it's a public hearing, thank you. Gosh, one of these days, I won't miss one of these. We have one card.
The speaker is Susan Olmstead Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. I just wanted to say that I'm looking at this fund balance, and the fund balance is 60%. And the recommended is 25%. And I'm not so sure, and I know, I've done budgeting for governments, it's very conservative. I think we're going to break even. I would ask that at mid-year, you closely look at the revenues. Government's job is not to amass wealth. We're supposed to be spending the money on services, and right now with a 60% fund balance, we're amassing wealth. And I understand that in the 2000, you know, 2012, you guys did a great job of reserving money, and some has to be reserved, because we never know when there's going to be an economic downturn. But this is excessive, and I think we should look at adding more projects, and we passed Measure R. So we're also contributing more money to the budget. So I would ask that at mid-year, you closely look at the revenues, closely look at the estimates, because I really think we're going to break even this year, and the Measure R will be in addition to this. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are no other cards?
There are no further speaker cards.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
Do we have to remake it? Nope, we don't, okay.
Okay. Oh, yeah, because I went out of order again. Okay, so this one's done. I swear, you guys, one of these days, I'll get it right.
Been a long day.
I get to try again.
Do we need to have a second?
Didn't we vote on the...
Yeah, you have a point.
Do we need a second?
Yes, okay. Yeah, Berwin.
Vote.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to try again and see if I can get it right this time. Our next public hearing is Item 6B, Approval of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2020 through 2024.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We're looking to, we're requesting the adoption of Resolution Number 2019-39, approving and adopting the City of Norco Capital Improvement Program budget for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. And as you're aware, we had our CIP study session this afternoon, and there isn't a PowerPoint on it today, but we do have some changes to what's in your agenda packet. One item was changed this afternoon for the Fire Improvement Fund, and it's reducing the Station 57 improvements to $60,000. And that impacts the following fund and account number, 142-761-43115, for building improvements. And another item came up, the city manager requested that I amend the total estimated revenues and estimated expenditures to remove the Measure R 132 projects that were included for presentation purposes only in the CIP. So we're going to reduce the total revenues and expenditures and modify that. The current amount in your agenda packet indicates, well, actually, this is modified down by $60,000. Twenty, it will now be $29,712,566 for all CIP improvements, including the reduced Station 57 item. And in terms of revenues, revenues will be $23,901,515. And we'll present to you a revised CIP with that information, that detail. So just to summarize again, we're removing Measure R projects, which totaled $3,641,125, and we are reducing the Station 57 project to $60,000. And that specifically was replacement of bay doors. How many questions for staff?
On the Measure R, that, you said removing the projects, but in a previous Measure R meeting, did they not vote to backfill a public safety account?
Actually, what this, the CIP are just capital improvement, no operating. And what we want to do is remove it.
Maybe I should have asked that question sooner? Is that what you're saying?
No, this is, actually, that would be an operating side, an operating, we actually, the setup for Measure R is we have an operating fund and a capital improvement fund.
Right.
Two separate ones. But we're not funding them for the current fiscal, the next fiscal year.
That's all I want to know. We didn't backfill anything?
No, 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 nothing.
Okay, I just want to make sure on that.
No impact of Measure R on the budget.
Zero.
Right.
Okay.
To follow up on that, earlier when we did our budget session, and for those people that weren't there at our budget session, none of our general fund budget or this capital improvement budget included any Measure R funding. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So, just so that everyone knows, and that, and you related to us that you're going to come back mid-August, Andy, or...
We'll first meet it in August.
So that we will actually be able to see what the Measure R committee recommended and where we implement those, correct?
That's correct.
So we may be adding to this budget then, or looking at where...
Yeah, you certainly will be adding to this budget.
Okay, based upon the recommendations and what we approved for Measure R. But this current budget, no Measure R?
No Measure R.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Are no speaker cards for this item?
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-39.
One second.
Sir, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2019-39. All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to Item Number 7, which is City Council, City Manager and Staff Communications. I know we're going to probably have a couple of items here. So I will start with Councilman Newton. Do you have anything?
I wanted to ask council's support with this. So here recently, we had a little item that kind of triggered my interest with, with the fire department, and it was the purchase of that ice machine. And doing further investigation on that, just kind of pricing it out and those things, it seems to me that we could improve our purchasing policy, okay? And so I think we need to consider that maybe we start looking at, slowly looking into like a part-time purchasing agent, that we need to dial this thing in a lot tighter. And so it's, and I brought it up under that CDA report about how a scope of a project or a work project can creep on you. And like, say we have a certain vendor, I guess I'm looking at you, Gina, and I'm asking these questions as far as where a director has a certain spending limit, okay? And let's just say for conversations, $10,000. And authorizes a vendor to go out and perform or supply for $10,000. And then later on, he goes back to that same vendor, you know, supply or provide something for $9,000. And a little later, you go back to that same vendor, and all of a sudden, that $10,000 authorization with one vendor is creeped up, so that, that vendor's out there, say like, for $40,000, $50,000. At what point, and Andy, you can jump on this, that with our purchasing policy, when does council get to look at this? What's the dollar amount that you're authorized to go to? So we don't get into that creeping? And do we know we're really being competitive? It's, and it's something I think we need to provide as council. You have nobody behind you. So it's like, okay, I need this ice machine. Go get an ice machine for the fire station. But we don't have anybody out there shopping it, and we overpay. Or we go to the next item. I'm just using that one for an example. But what, what's the allowance? What do you, what dollar amount before it has to come back to council? Do we have a dollar amount?
Yes, we did pass that last summer. We did reset, according to uniform guidance, our internal purchasing limits. But I do understand where you're coming from, where you can have this creep of spending on one vendor, you know, under a certain dollar amount, and then coming back and spending under again, and it might sneak by.
Well, it does sneak by.
Yes. And we do have mechanisms to check on that, I should say. But I am also hearing that, you know, we just want to share with everybody, we are a small city.
Right.
And in larger cities, there is a body that does review that, and maybe everybody's here familiar with a purchasing agent, and it isn't the most pleasant experience when you have a project that you really want to vendor. And, but they, they question you on that. So I understand the questioning process is more than just the creep part. It's the questioning the whole process within the policy and guidelines. So it's, to answer your question, it's bigger than just the creep when it comes to purchasing processes.
Just the little bit that I see is that I think we have a need for that. And I'm not picking on the chief, I'm just, go back to this ice machine example, that I got a copy of the invoice from the chief, and all it says is, "Ice machine." $5,600 that we bought from a heating and air contractor in El Monte. So all I do is I Google "ice machines are us" for $3,600. But I don't know, is there more to that story? That have to be disposed of correctly? Did it have to be picked up? Whatever. There's no description. There's no model number.
Yeah, that, we have the description and the breakout.
Not on the invoice.
Yeah, and I have the description when we ordered it, which includes labor, material, markup on the unit, because the contractors can mark up the unit. Yeah, from the service provider manufacturer, $3,600, but he's entitled to a markup. So I have all of that detail. This was an emergency item that we did, based on CalFire, telling us it needed to be done and not to wait on this. So could we have gone out and went to bid on this and probably got a better deal? Probably so. But that wasn't the conditions that were presented to us, that we needed to react on this immediately.
Well, there may be, we don't need to belabor that one example, because I think there's another side to that conversation. It's just, from the purchasing standpoint, are we being competitive with that? And that's where I think, you know, we could be lacking. Yeah, sure.
Comments? You may. We went through a process here last year to approve a purchasing ordinance, and that ordinance is, was well researched, meaning that is very consistent with what you see in most cities. And that provides different levels of authority to different individuals and prescribes level of purchases that requires different levels of steps in making that purchase. So in the issue of split purchasing, which is what is called in the purchasing world, where employees actually issue multiple purchase orders to avoid having to go through a competitive process, unfortunately, it happens a lot in city government. And so the question is, who is monitoring that to make sure that it doesn't happen? A good thing for us, we are certainly a very small city, so I do not suspect that there is a lot of that that is going on here in the city of Norco. But it's certainly something to be, someone needs to keep an eye on. With respect to having a purchasing agent or a part-time purchasing agent, that is something we can, we can look into. First of all, I think our purchasing ordinance, actually, we need to have, staff needs to formalize the procedures that guide that, the administrative policies and procedures that implements that. I think that is something that still hasn't happened yet. I think we need to address that perhaps first, and that will bring it back to the city council. That will provide a first opportunity to review that process one more time. And in my past experience, I have overseen a large purchasing department in the city of Pasadena, and I know how purchasing agents walk. Quite frankly, they push a lot of paper, and there is not a whole lot of value that is added to that. On major purchases, whether it be engineering projects or specialized professional services or specifications for building improvement, all of that, that still has to go to the department to specify the product or the services that are being desired, and then go through the purchasing process, which is where the purchasing agent makes sure that you are in fact sending out these specifications to all available potential contractors. So they do have some value, but again, I think we need to first of all, take this one step at a time, finalize our purchasing ordinance by coming back to the city council with the administrative policies and procedures that guide the implementation of what we have in the ordinance. And then we can take a look at whether we need a part-time purchasing agent or even a full-time purchasing agent, if we believe that it will pay for itself through cost savings. I think every employee, every department head has a responsibility currently to follow that process as is outlined. I get it sometimes. I get it, sometimes time may not permit that they want to, for one reason or the other. But those, that is the city ordinance and everyone has a, there is a requirement to follow those quotation process and making sure that whatever we do, we are doing it on a competitive basis. And that responsibility that lies currently with the department head, working directly with their, with their executive secretary or other clerical staff in their department. Of course, the chair currently is in the finance department, which then is responsible for issuing the final purchase order on these things. And the way it's set up is that if they have questions or concerns or issues that could not be resolved, then I am also there to make sure that those city rules that have been approved by the city council are followed.
And Andy, I appreciate what you're saying, that, and hopefully, it's the same thing. But if I understand you correctly, we just need to improve and communicate our procedures with our purchasing policy. And I think what may help is like Planet Bid, you know, is a bidding system, service, that, you know, maybe start implementing that. So I'd just like to see us move forward more on establishing the procedures and that, how procedures would affect with the overall policy. Go ahead, yeah, thank you.
Dana, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Chad? Steve? Brian?
I'm Friday.
And who's our MC?
And I can't be there because I'm at WRCOG. I just realized that.
I'll help you out, buddy.
All right, thank you.
All right. Teamwork at its finest. Gina? Chief? Lieutenant?
Just a reminder, with Fourth of July coming just around the corner here, we are doing our fireworks enforcement program the week of Fourth of July, which is a zero tolerance enforcement period in conjunction with animal control and code enforcement. Fines can range up to the $2,000 threshold. So it's important to obviously report illegal fireworks in the city. That way, we protect our rural atmosphere with our animals and their lifestyle as well. So just a reminder for residents, to report fireworks, you can call our sheriff's dispatch non-emergency line and we'll go ahead and have a deputy respond out.
Thank you. Councilman Hannah?
Speaking of that $2,000 fine, I remember last year, the day after the Fourth, I was up here at the city clerk's counter and some guy walks in and he had a ticket there and he says, "Who did I write this check to?" His kids had got one before now. Well, he didn't even put up a fight.
Councilman Hoffman?
Come on. Yeah, Brian, or I know J C S D, and this is something for the public, they're going to have their fireworks, what, on the 29th?
The 29th, yes.
So then, and then Silver Lakes is doing theirs on July 4th.
That's correct.
So we might want to put something out to the residents.
We already did and it went out today to all of the homes along all of our bluffs.
Okay, that's-
Plus, it's being advertised on our other publications.
Okay, thank you.
They're in the same place?
Yes, they're going to be in the same place on the J C S D property.
And then, I guess a piggyback on what, a piggyback, yeah, to follow up what Greg said, and something we may want to look at in when you develop this purchasing property. I know Chad has it with his preferred contractors when he calls people out. And to do something, emergency, something, you already have a list of things that's going to cost you to do that, you know comes out in a last-minute deal, you need to quickly fix something. And perhaps that we should be looking at in our purchasing thing as preferred vendors that will give us a yearly bid and say, hey, you know what? You need this, here's what it is, this is what I can give you, rather than go out and searching and trying to do that. So you have an idea of these companies that are already servicing companies, maybe products or sales, just like that ice machine. Hey, this is what I can give you. And, you know, you just go hit them up and tell them you want a good deal and then just put them on your list so that they're can, you know, they know that you're going to go buy from them. Those can be interesting. You have to keep up on them so you don't have any nepotism once from certain family members. But it's one way to keep your costs down, that they're going to give you these special rates if you buy from them. So it's just something to think about. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Andy?
Nothing.
Colin?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Mash?
Yeah, I have one thing. One of my concerns, I've talked about this before, is that we, as a city, trying to protect the half-acre lots, as horses come and go, one of the things we were working at over at Norco College was the idea of creating small lot farms. And I'd really like to look into that. I don't know what's going to happen at Norco College right now, but I think that anything we can do to maintain either equestrian usage, in other words, what is a person going to pay for? Why would they take care of a half-acre parcel? And, you know, one of the trends unfortunately has been people want to move large businesses literally into their backyards. They, that will not sustain a rural lifestyle, no matter what anybody says. History proves that. But I'm thinking that if you can create a situation where you try to attract boutique farms, I didn't realize this, there's already a whole bunch of them here in Norco and we have this great FFA program. If you could link something at Norco College rather than having to go to Mount SAC, I think it might be something that we could look at that would bring people into town that literally want to help preserve open space in their backyards. And it would also be kind of fun. So I'm just wondering, Andy, and now that you're through the budget process, maybe we can bring that back? Maybe there is a consultant that Robin and I have talked to, maybe have him come and talk to us and do something like that? I'll send you his information. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right. With that, if there's nothing else, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.